All right, let's get this meeting to order. It is six oh one PM and we will start with a roll call. So I'll just start with Becky Biesel.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Brian Davis.
Here.
And Stephanie Malm here. If everybody could please stand and remove your hats for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Can I get a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the agenda from the last meeting. It's the brief meeting and I'm not finding it here. The minutes, I'm sorry.
Um, may refresh your meeting.
Okay. I'll do it right now. Okay, approval of the minutes. Okay. Alright. Okay then, let's go back to the agenda thing.
Alright, any discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, voting in favor for approval of tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, voting against, say aye. Motion is approved. Go into the approval of the minutes for the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one special board meeting. Can I get a motion for approval?
I have a point on that one. On the minutes, I noticed that the metrics, the actual metrics that were discussed at that meeting aren't as part of those minutes and probably should be on there. Okay, so during the course of that meeting, we talked about a lot of different numbers, metrics, all those types of things are part of that discussion, but they're not part of the actual minutes, so they're not a matter of record. You know, we went through a number, a lot of numbers, different things like that. So I just wanted to make sure they were included within the minutes. Our charts, things that essentially we went through.
Are you talking about what was approved?
I'm talking about just, not, yes, definitely what was approved, but also we went through the metrics where we talked about the, the point five for HP and all those different things. But none of the, we went through a lot of charts that night, a lot of numbers, but none of them appear on them as part of the minutes.
So those won't, because those are part of the record of the meeting? Because if you go back to the meeting, then all of the presentations are there.
Okay, so, so then these minutes, just, we can refer back to the meeting and then pull them that way.
Yep.
And those are all kind of con- co- I don't know what to say, conflated together.
Correct.
Within that, that's fine, as long as it's somewhere.
You can see the date.
As long as we can pull it. Okay, thank you.
Alright, can I get a motion for the minutes, please?
So moved.
Second.
Voting in favor for, or sorry, uh, any discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, voting in favor for approval of, uh, the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Voting against, same sign? Motion is approved. Alright, so we're on to the fun stuff. Uh, we are going to be seating our new board members. Carrie Tate, Jessica Dressley, and Mike Reese. So at this time, what I'd like to do is welcome you to the front of the, the board table here. Um, and there's a little, little something that I'm going to say and then we'll get you sworn in. So, um, it is, it is, can you hear me still? Okay. It is, just making sure. It is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous amount of responsibility as a school board member of your school district with the duties empowered by Minnesota, Minnesota legislator, legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in a position of being morally and legally responsible for the equitable quality education of every student in our district. In carrying out these, these responsibilities, you will be asked to fulfill the role of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with extensive participation of the community envisions the community's educational future and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. As a board member, you must be accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment for, of student achievement in all conditions affecting of the education of our children. As a board member, you will serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students in our community, schools, community schools, to advocate for, uh, the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district towards fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence, excellence for every teacher in the area of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, please raise your right hand. If you want to turn around, then we can get some pictures too. I'll, I'll just read it from here. Yep. Please raise your right hand and publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me. I state your name. Affirm that I will support. The Constitution of the United States. And of the state of Minnesota. And will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of school board member. Of independent school district two hundred. To the best of my judgment and ability. You may lower your right, right hand. Directors Dressley, Reese, and Tate, we welcome you to the table. Please have a seat. Awesome. So the first order of business, we will be electing the officers of the board. Um, nominations need not be seconded. And upon, uh, hearing no further nominations, there will be a vote on each nominee in order in which he or she was nominated. So, um, the nominee with the most votes is appointed then to the, that position. So there are four positions that we are going to be voting on tonight. Um, and we'll start with the first one. So the election of chairperson of the board. So at this time, are there any nominations for chairperson of the board?
I nominate Carrie Tate.
Are there any nominations for chairperson of the board?
I nominate Brian Davis.
Okay, are there any other nominations for chairperson of the board? I'm going to repeat it two more times. Are there any additional nominations for chairperson of the board? Are there any additional nominations for chairperson of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations of the office of chairperson and move to a vote. Those in favor of Carrie Tate, please raise your hand.
Could I, sorry, could I, could I just say something? Quick. Um, I just want to say, I, I, you know, obviously I haven't worked with you folks before. But I would be truly honored to be the chair of the board. Um, I think I'm a good communicator. I'm respectful. Um, and I just, I would appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Is that, is that better? Okay. Alright. Those in favor of Carrie Tate, please raise your hand. Alright, we have Mike Reese, Jessica Dressley, and Carrie. Those in favor of Brian Davis, raise your hand. Having received the majority vote, the school board chairperson of ISD two hundred for twenty twenty-two will be Brian Davis. Uh, Brian, at this time, I will ask you to, um, come up here, or do you want me to bring the gavel to you?
We'll just keep moving it right along. Um, are there any nominations for vice chairperson of the board?
I nominate Carrie Tate.
Carrie Tate has been nominated, writing that down. Are there any other nominations for vice chairperson of the board?
I nominate Stephanie Malm.
Sorry, Stephanie Malm has been nominated. Are there any additional nominations for vice chairperson of the board? I'll read it two more times. Are there any additional nominations for chair, vice chairperson of the board? Are there any additional nominations for vice chairperson of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations of the office of vice chairperson and move to a vote. Those who vote in favor of Carrie Tate, please raise your hand. Votes from Mike Reese, Carrie Tate, and Jessica Dressley. Those who vote in favor of Stephanie Malm for vice chair of the board, please raise your hand. We recognize Becky Biesel, Stephanie Malm, Lisa Hadine, and Brian Davis. Having received the majority vote, the school board vice chairperson ISD two hundred for two thousand twenty-two will be Stephanie Malm. Will now move to election of board clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk of the?
I nominate Becky Biesel at this time.
Nomination for Becky Biesel for clerk of the board. Are there any additional nominations for clerk of the board?
I nominate Jessica Dressley.
A nomination for Jessica Dressley. Are there any other nominations for clerk of the board? Are there any additional nominations for clerk of the board? Are there any additional nominations for clerk of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations for the office of clerk and move to a vote. Those who, excuse me, those who vote in favor of Becky Biesel, please raise your hand. Becky Biesel, Stephanie Malm, Lisa Hadine, and Brian Davis. Those who vote in favor of Jessica Dressley, please raise your hand. Jessica Dressley, Carrie Tate, and Mike Reese. Having received the majority vote, the school board clerk of ISD two hundred for two thousand twenty-two will be Becky Biesel. We will move to election of board treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer of the board?
I nominate Lisa Hadine at this time.
Nomination for Lisa Hadine. Are there any additional nominations for treasurer of the board? Are there any additional nominations for treasurer of the board? I'll read it one more time. Are there any additional nominations for treasurer of the board? With no further nominations, we'll close the nominations for the office of treasurer of the board and move to a vote. Those who vote in favor of Lisa Hadine, please raise your hand. We have Mr. Reese, or Director Reese, I should say, I'll get used to being director and not mister. Director Reese, Director Tate, Director Dressley, excuse me, Director Biesel, Director Malm, Director Hadine, Director Davis. Having received the majority vote for the school board treasurer of ISD two hundred for two thousand twenty-two will be Lisa Hadine. At this time, I would like to recognize our visitors. I just reminded to you that the community, that out in the community, the board meeting agendas and minutes can be found on Board Book. Thank you to all of those who are tuning in through HGTV and in person at the Hastings Middle School. Thank you all for participating and being here. We'll move on to items for discussion. We'll start with board committee membership for the two thousand twenty-two calendar year. Moving over to that now on my board book. It's locking up. Got it. It took a minute. There are, looks like we still have facilities on here. There are, oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old one.
Yeah, no, that's just for reference.
Oh, it's just for reference, okay.
In the agenda item, it's got the.
Got it. We have four committees that members of the school board serve on. There's a finance committee, there's the policy committee, there's community engagement committee, and there's board member for nine seventeen. Nine seventeen, for those who don't know, is a conflation of roughly fourteen different school districts, which come together on a number of different things. One of the ones that jumps out at me all the time is the work they do with children with special needs. So that's a very, very big job.
I would like to point out. I, I would like to point out that the nine seventeen, uh, board member is a compensated position.
Yes, that's true.
Finance committee is not. At least I've never been compensated for.
No, it's not.
It's not.
It is not.
So I know we had talked previously in the last few months that facilities, now that the bond is done, we can probably do away with that particular committee. So then we would be looking at potentially, well, definitely finance. Continuing with community engagement and then continuing obviously with policy. And then, yeah, we have nine seventeen. Strategic planning ad hoc committee that is done. So really, we're looking at, well, the four committees then.
Correct. So the, um, and the reason for the facilities piece is the facility committee was created to ensure, so the public knows, that all of the bond money was covered and spent certain ways. Now that has come to an end, and therefore what we will do now is we will get updates on a quarterly basis from our facilities people in terms of what's going on, what's needed, those types of things. So that's when we would get a look at those, is on a quarterly basis. Unless for some reason we feel that we need to have those updates more often.
Don't we also, um, elect somebody to represent with the high school league?
No, thank you for bringing that up. That is definitely one that will, and Becky Biesel is on that one right now too. So thank you, we'll, we'll add that on there. That we'll have to appoint somebody to that as well.
Thank you Director, Director Reese, appreciate that. Um, it's one we don't think about all the time.
Apparently I forgot about it too.
With everything that's been going on, the Mrs. High School League's been a little bit of a question mark. So that's good. Thank you. In terms of our list of these board committee memberships, is there anything else that we might have missed? There's something that, um, should be in there. We've explained the facilities piece. The other ones are fairly standard. Seeing nothing, I will move to, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lisa, were you going to say?
No, I was just going to say, I think we've, we've worked overtime to reduce the number of committees and to do more of our work in the board as a whole, in my, my time on the board. And I think that's been, um, really successful in terms of team building and keeping people knowledgeable. So I, again, the facilities piece, I imagine, should there be another bond in some number of years, we'll reactivate it with community engagement, partnership, investigation, and off we'll go again. I know we've talked in the past about a legislative engagement piece. I think, um, that we're not at a place where we're ready for a committee on that, because we don't have a, a mission statement. But it might be good throughout the course of this year uh, to gather information from school boards that have that in place and learn about sort of how they're structured and, and how they align with other organizations. So I think we can take that just as a, as a data gathering piece. And I just don't want us to forget that going forward.
That's true. Uh, sometimes with committees, you get a little bit into a rabbit hole and we want, we want to make sure that everybody knows everything that's going on. So we take the big ones as committees, but we make sure most of the things we're discussing in our work session so that as much as humanly possible, everything's out there and open, for sure for everyone. Hastings ISD two hundred trademark, I'd like to move on to, we're done with board committee memberships.
Just about the committees. So for the three new board members, the, the committees, it is kind of the frequency of when we meet and when is dictated based off of our availability, availability and then the needs of the district and that particular committee. So for example, policy, last year, actually the last two years, we met sometimes twice a month. Now that we're kind of back on pace with, with policy, um, we're looking at, you know, once a month, maybe every other month. So it will be dictated. So once Brian, as the chair, uh, gets out the committee appointments, um, we'll be able to communicate as a committee to figure out the frequency of when we want to meet and, and where.
I would add to that policy. Um, policy is off, I was on policy committee. Policy's often a work in progress. In full disclosure, we had a lot of things that need to be cleaned up from years gone by. Um, and we've gotten all of that cleaned up now. And to Stephanie's point, it's now work that we need to do going forward to make sure we stay on point and anything that needs to be cleaned, it gets cleaned up, anything we pick up on, we take a look at for sure to make sure that everything is looking the way it's supposed to be looking in terms of what we want it to look like and also what the state mandates it be. Yes, Carrie?
Um, I was just wondering, I, I believe MSBA recommends that we do the committee assignments in this meeting. Is that possible or no?
The committee assignments, generally speaking, are done within the week, but typically not that, at that point, because what ends up happening is there's an opportunity for people to say, well, here's what I'd like to serve on, and it gives, well, I guess me and Hal, an opportunity to think it through and not try to make a determination in a vacuum. And, you know, just instantaneously, it's better to have a couple of days, but we really do try to get it out within a couple of days and not wait very long, because we've got, you know, work we want to get done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you guys should reach out to Brian and it could, you know, just email saying, hey, this is where my personal interest is, um, within that. And for, to take off on Stephanie's point, finance has been relatively quiet for the last years, couple of years, year and a half. Um, but I anticipate with, uh, levies expiring, that that's going to move to a, every, I'm going to say six weeks, every month or two, that we'll be meeting, kind of helping, um, refine what the storyline needs to be and, and the timeline, and then bringing those forward in the in-between pieces. Uh, community engagement, that schedule's already set, so you can look at future meetings. The link to future meetings near the end of this agenda and see how frequently that meets. That's a, one, it sounds like the funnest committee we've got. In terms of when they report out, they are like doing cool, energizing stuff. Um, but it does have, obviously, community engagement, a lot of community representation on that, and the time is a little bit fixed. So I'd encourage you to look at the times of those established meetings. If you're going to express an interest in that, because it, it's tricky. I mean, there's just a lot of organizations that need to show up to that table.
Yeah, I would, I would echo Lisa's sentiment. Uh, finance committee is definitely going to be busier with the, with the levies coming up and then of course, a lot of the budget considerations we've got going forward as well. I've already spoken about nine seventeen a little bit. Um, that's, they're all, they all serve purposes and they're all important. And then what we try to do is distribute folks the best we can across them. Obviously, not everybody can do everything, so we try to do the best we can to try to come up with, um, lining people up as best we can in terms of those committee assignments. But absolutely please email me and we'll, we'll get that done very quickly, very quickly and expediently. Is there anything else on board committee membership for the twenty-two calendar year? Seeing that, I'll move on to Hastings ISD two hundred trademarks.
Alright, and I think Jen will come up when it's, when it's appropriate. She doesn't probably want to, but she will. So, uh, just to bring people up to speed, we haven't had much, if any, conversation about this, but what's been happening over the last year, um, we were given legal advice that we should begin the process of trademarking, uh, what our main logos are for the school district and the two that are in the packet I uploaded, or had Becky upload them tonight, uh, so people could see them. There, it's nothing new. That's really why I wanted them to be uploaded, was just so people could see. It's nothing new. Um, we'll see if it uploads here. So it's, it's this logo. And of course, it's going to kick me right back out again. And then, and that's this one. So it's just the two logos. So what happened, um, Jen Subert and Carrie Gore have been working with the state and have gotten both of these approved. Um, the reason that we wanted to get them approved and trademarked was because there are many, many people that are using our logos and we didn't want to be in a spot where other people trademark them first and then all of a sudden we're having to pay to use our logos. So, um, I wanted to bring this up simply as a discussion item tonight because I really need, as a board, for you to be considering a couple of different things. Uh, one is, do you have any interest in having a conversation about us trademarking other logos of the district? For example, our elementary schools right now have different logos and would we want to do that? And/or are there other logos that either our sports teams use or, um, that, that are pretty prominent that we would also want to put through to be trademarked? Um, so that's, that's question one, doesn't need to be decided tonight, but I just needed to get it on everyone's radar. The second part is, uh, having you consider, do we want to, at some point, charge for others to use this? And the reason that this becomes important uh, as a decision is that, like I said before, other people are using all of the logos that we have for the district and therefore, those people that are selling their merchandise with our logos are making money on it. We're in the process of setting up our online store. I, depending upon which school you've come through, or all three, you will know that we have school stores all over the place. Whether it's through the PTA or this or that. So the other part of this that's moving parallel is Jen Subert and Trent Hanson have been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to get a larger Hastings ISD two hundred online store where everything can feed into. And the nice thing about that would be that the vendors that we would work with would be able to give us rebates on the materials. on the materials and getting them for better. So we don't want to be in a position where we're in competition with other people selling the same or like merchandise uh for what we've got. So again, nothing that needs to be decided tonight, but as a discussion item, we're at a spot administratively where we've done enough work and we're far enough along where I need you as a board to be considering those two things probably in the next three or four months. And if you want us to dig any deeper, do any more work with it, or leave what is is, but it it I think it will be an opportunity. Um when we talk about budget adjustment stuff, it's one budget adjustment stuff, it's one of those things where it will be an opportunity for us to make some revenue in a unique way, different way that we aren't now. Yeah.
Yes, very cool. How much does it cost to trademark something?
Two hundred and fifty dollars.
If I remember, it was it was a total of two fifty? It was seventy-five, I think.
And then
Yeah, let's hear what Jen paid for it.
Fifty dollars.
Is that state or federal? That's what.
Yeah.
Do we, are there logos for like band, baseball, football on every single? Is that the idea to do?
Well, that would be the, that's what we'd need, I think, for the board to help give us some direction. How far down this rabbit hole do you want us to go in trademarking? Um I know that in in other districts, what, when they get to this spot, what they do have a conversation about is do they want to review and make some decisions about what are the official logos and branding of the district going to be? That that is where it goes now. That's can be a big discussion or a little discussion for what you brought up, Director Reese, is that some entities of the district have spent a lot of time in what they have and you kind of tread on territory if all of a sudden you say, I can't, you can't use that logo, you gotta use these. Again, that's a decision for the board. I I'm not in a position right now to make a recommendation that we do or don't do that, but we need to take some time as a board and talk through it.
I'm actually glad that that came up and I I appreciate um what you brought up there, um Mike, because it does lead to the question because right now the logos that we use, used by every sport, right? So if we decide to go down that route, do we have a baseball logo and a basketball logo? And then we do subsequently brand that because it's specific. I mean, you know, there's really, there's not a, I mean, wrestling of all things, there's not a wrestling logo, there's not a so you make a very good point that there'd be an opportunity there to drive a whole different model. So it's definitely something that we should look at and research a little bit. Probably worth some time.
Yeah, I think the band one would be really good as well because I know that that's really big. So um trying to market that and so I think that would be a good.
It's a great suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that leads us, that'll lead us to an interesting conversation over the next three to four months because as those of us who have kids who've made it up into the high school level know, and I'm sure it's true in the elementary now, too, is though selling that equip that uh gear is a fundraiser for the sport, right? It's a hockey fundraiser, it's a football fundraiser, it's a baseball fundraiser to sell their sweatshirts. And they change the look a little bit every year um because clearly you want to buy a new one every year, don't you? And um so I guess the it'll be an interesting conversation, maybe leading us into the next school year so that we're in a place to say to to whether it's band, orchestra, baseball, you know, this is where our district branding ends and this is where your fundraising gear sale begins.
And I think that's that's why we didn't, we wanted to make sure we had this much done because what I wouldn't want the folks that are in those different groups to think is that we're we're working on something behind the scenes because I don't want to go down that road unless the board wants us to. This is really just to get these first two logos, which are the main logos trademarked, like I said, so we don't end up in a reverse situation where someone else is saying, you can't use that now. So we'll keep that on the forefront and start working on some of the other stuff and bring that back then to the school board.
No, that's great. And thanks for bringing it up again, Mike, because I didn't even think about the idea of trademarking everybody at the need. Okay, so let's move on to our first reading. Our go-to policies in our first reading. First one is graduation requirements. Now, unless I'm missing something, the only thing that changed here is the point five that was determined last December.
Yeah, the 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 reason for this um being on as a first reading is for no other reason than the last board meeting where um it'll be on page two. It is under section four B, uh number five, changing from four credits of physical education and health to three and a half credits of physical education and health. The rest of the policy um wouldn't be updated at this time. And as uh I've gone back and forth with a couple of board members, it is one of those policies that definitely needs to be on the list that we shift into the next year. But that is the reason for it being a first reading is simply for that point.
Yep, perfect. Um and then um for those in the community that aren't aware, when we do first readings, those first readings are not voted on. Um they come back again for a second reading. At that point, they can be moved to an action item and then voted on at that point. Um the reason that this um change is on here is because it had to be done by the time we got out of last month because the children had to be ready to register. Obviously, these things can now down the road be revisited if anybody on the board wants to do that. And we certainly will end up talking about all of these things again, but that is the reason for it, and I wanted people to understand that throughout in the general public. Also, for a piece of clarification, because I know it's come up a few times, while the requirement has been reduced by point five, the elective is still available for children to register for. It wasn't eliminated. It's just that it's not a requirement anymore, but kids certainly can sign up for it if they'd like to, and it's available as an elective. Just wanted to clarify that. Yes, Carrie?
Could I could I ask for a point of clarification on that? Um because you're saying that you're not reducing the class offerings, but yet we're expected to see a reduction in the spending. So why exactly, if we're not actually reducing the classes, how are we seeing that money go away?
I am going to defer that over to Jen because it it gets, there's formulas involved, so I don't want to misspeak on that piece of that one.
And I can talk to it a little bit. So um what ends up happening, what we found this last year is and what we know is that when we require, particularly in the discussion that the board had, particularly in the tenth grade year, where we're requiring classes and we have avid going on in world language and music and the other things, anytime in a in a secondary schedule that you require kids to take something, you're locking them in depending upon how many other things they have to take, right? So in the seventh period day, if I'm an advanced um English person and I'm an avid person and I'm a band person and I'm a Spanish person and I have to take FIAED, now I've locked into five out of those seven that I have to take by eliminating the half credit. Now it's an elective, so now in theory, in the scheduling, what happens is I've now reduced the amount of conflicts that will happen, so I can take classes other places. The other piece that we are assuming um when we have the requirements is that all kids then want to take, would would want to take that. So the the way that it was worded and presented to the board was that we would reduce FIAED by half of a credit, but we would also then see a one FTE reduction. So it's kind of a two-part piece. The expectation is for the high school to end up with one FTE being reduced um and not require that as a class, that HP ten class. So those kids will go somewhere else in theory. They'll choose a different elective.
Yeah, so I guess so then you 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 actually won't have as many classes offered at the same, in the same semester is kind of what I'm hearing because you you assume that you won't.
The assumption is you won't, you won't, you won't be able to tell exactly where that falls out until you get all the kids registered.
Right.
Um but the assumption is, for example, if you have thirty kids that you were required into fifth hour HP ten, now because it's not a requirement, those thirty kids would be spread out somewhere else. In theory, now that class doesn't have to run.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry about that. Anything else on the first reading for the graduation requirements? Jessica?
Well, since this policy hasn't been updated for fifteen years, I just wanted, will this go back to the policy committee for a review then before we vote on it to?
My my best guess is that it'll that'll that two things will happen. Um there'll be a a review before the second reading, just to it may not even make it to policy committee if it's a if it's this three and a half change. This is this three and a half is a change to resolve a budget adjustment. And concurrent, like right now, we're starting to run a program review of secondary programming, five twelve, and and that, the outcome of that is gonna require a substantive review of this whole policy. So there's sort of a short-term question with this policy and then a longer term, and longer term means later in the later in the board year that we would see the same policy come back again.
Okay.
So in nutshell, it's it's an adjustment for now to cover that base, but yes, this whole thing has to be reviewed. That's a good question. Anybody else have a question or comment on the graduation requirement piece that we're looking at right now?
Just making sure that we it aligns with the state requirements and stuff. Does it um have, okay?
It does. It absolutely does. But to Jessica's point, when you look at something, you start going through, you know, all of that, all that writing, there could be something else in there um that yeah, we just want to adjust that we can still do within state statutes, but we just want to do um for the benefit of our our district.
Yeah, we actually, we still exceed the state standard.
We do.
Um with even with this change. Not by as much as we did.
Okay, um so let's talk, um let's move on to travel and field trips.
All right, so this is something that the board, this will be our third time uh looking at this. Uh the reason that this is on the agenda as a discussion item is because the board had asked uh back in February of twenty twenty-one, so a year ago, when we first put the moratorium on travel, that we take a look at this every six months. So we looked at this six months ago. Uh I believe it was in June or July or August, uh August on this one. And so now we would be at a spot where we'd be looking at this again. And essentially, um as you've read through it, what the decision was made by the board was that while at this point in time, we're allowing uh domestic travel, meaning within the contiguous states, because the the thought was that at least, for example, in recent days, if the airlines went down, there would be a second way for our kids to get back and our families to get back um that were chaperoning on trips. Um international travel has had a moratorium placed on it, and the reason that we put this in place what really came out of high school needs to plan, and usually they're planning their trips over a year in advance, and it gets into fundraising. And so this was a way for the school board to provide clarity way in advance so that the band directors, the world language teachers, anyone else that's planning those trips knew when they could start saying to kids, yeah, we could plan this trip, or we're gonna need to do something domestically. So what I think is gonna need to happen is if the if the board wants to, if the current board now wants to make any changes, this might be something that needs to be an action item on the twenty-sixth to make adjustments to based on any conversation that would happen tonight, and we would put it on as an action item on the twenty-sixth.
Correct. Now, for for a little context, this one gets a little tricky, and here's why. A lot of the organizations need at times a yearly way to know what they're doing because they have to start fundraising and things like that. The reason that gets tricky is, for example, let's say that um the French classes or the or students want to go to France. Those through these um organizations are usually planned about a year in advance. You start your fundraising, things like that. The challenge we've had is even if we know what's happening domestically, we have no idea whether these families would gather this money, get everything set, and then France goes, no one's coming to our country right now. Now, what do we do about getting the money back? And the trouble was back then, the tour companies like, well, we might be able to give you a part of refund, credit. Now you got these kids that may be graduating. How did a credit does them know? So you see the the quandary, just and it certainly a lot of conversation around it because I want these kids moving around as much as they can, but that's why it got tricky is what do you do with them? It's gotta be planned out a year in advance. We don't know what the countries, these foreign countries are gonna do. That's why we stuck with the United States and kept Hawaii and Alaska out because, again, to Bob's point, you have to get on a plane. And we all saw what happened last week with airplanes. So that's why it's on here and certainly open to any discussion about it because as much movement as the kids can have, I'm all in favor of. Mike?
I'm really just against taking away those opportunities from the kids. You know, I mean, I get that they might be stranded and stuff, but I don't, I don't, I'm not a fan of trying to live in a fear. And I know that we don't know what's gonna happen next week or anything, but this could be the one and only chance that they get to go to Spain or even domestic travel wherever the case. So I'm, I don't think we should restrict it. I mean, I I I think that they've been through enough the last couple of years that we shouldn't prevent um them from trying to get back to a normal.
You know, I appreciate that. And my my thought, I've got to be honest with you. You know, if if we could have assurances from our parents that they're not going to blame us if if the tour company says you're not getting your money back, um and that's something that's understood, that, hey, it's possible that this could happen, I'm I'm right there with you. I I don't generally have a problem with it. If a family wants to choose to send their child to France and France is open, it's your choice to send your child to France. I I I tend to agree with you on that, Mike, actually.
I just have a comment. I truly agree with that. Honestly, I do. Um but we have a legal responsibility that we could be sued, and that's a huge issue. And also the financial burden of the students and families that are stuck over there is that, again, that's actually our legal responsibility. Um we don't have anything in writing. I mean, people say that, oh, it'll be okay, but we don't know that legal wise and um I think we should just revisit it again in six months. I think safely, domestic-wise, you can get home financially easier than being stranded in a foreign country for two weeks until you figure out how you're gonna get there, how you're gonna pay to get home, how you're gonna pay for all the amenities there.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned the signing off. I think somebody would have to sign off on that so that we don't end up in the entanglements that you're talking about. That's why I would say you'd have the, somebody'd have to sign off on that um for sure so that does not ensue. Yes, Lisa?
I'm just, I'm just trying to think about what what could or should be changed, if anything, about this because right now we've, we are allowing domestic travel with a COVID backup plan, so that's in place. And I know that um our music program at the high school has got that going. They have something going. So I think the question at hand that we would maybe need to take action or not is on the international travel. And this is right now, international trips are suspended through August. So if we think about trips that might occur in the summer of twenty twenty-three, what I would be interested in knowing is when does the planning for that start? And I'm still caught in the trap where I kind of think it's twenty twenty-one and I and I'm not sure what day it is. So if if we need to make a decision specifically about international travel in January, then I think it should be an action item. If it's something that it would be a late spring plan, you know, for the summer of twenty twenty-three, then let's revisit it in time for for that decision, just so that we're ahead of any international decisions. Because right now, we can, domestic travel is open for our students.
When they, when we had this conversation a year ago, if you remember, that's where the music department in particular um had shared that uh between now and spring is when they start the planning for that. So it would be between about a year and a half out uh for some of those. Uh be and it's simply because of the the runway to that is so long, deciding where you're gonna go, what you're gonna do, then getting all the fundraising parts organized. That's what that whole thirteen months then is, is time to do the fundraising. So it is, that's why I think we're visiting every six months because I think we are there, and it is somewhat of a crystal ball of what does it look like in twenty twenty-three. Um we still are, we wouldn't be, keeping as is, we would not be any different than our surrounding districts. Every district right now pretty much has this type of a plan in place. So but we can bring it back on the twenty-sixth and
Yeah, I think there's more discussion just because if if you don't do it now, then you're waiting a whole year. So now you're looking at the summer of twenty twenty-four. And technically, since this virus has started, then if you were in high school, there you had no chance. If you started high school in twenty twenty, you know, then you had no chance to to do that. And what did we do prior to COVID? If you started high school in twenty twenty, you know, then you had no chance to, to do that. And what did we do prior to COVID? We, we never, I'm, I'm assuming that we didn't have as many worries about all that stuff, but, what if somebody was caught in France in twenty eighteen? What was the scenario? What, what happened? What, you know? So I don't think our legal obligations had actually changed at all. I think it's just merely that people are scared, but, to delay it six months, you're actually delaying it a year. So, I mean, that's just kinda where I stand on that.
So you'd be in, just, uh, to be clear, Mike, you'd be in favor of looking at our general session this, this month and, and, and looking at, taking some action at that point?
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to discussion and whatever, but, um, yeah, I, I just think that, you know, um, the kids have been through a lot that, I, I mean, you got a plan for mistakes, changes, cancellations on anything, and we, I think just need to start getting back to life.
So, um, if we take no action, this expires in August of twenty twenty two. I mean, that's, that's the reality, right? There's no action required. I would like to see it come forward, um, as an action item at January, in the January business meeting, and I would like to see it extended through August of twenty twenty three. Because I don't think you can just say you wanna be done. I think, you have to deal with the reality of it, and it, if you're asking a family to do fundraising in the spring of this coming spring, and they can't get their money back, and it's not an individual student who has maybe a discipline issue or a medical issue, those happen. Um, it, this is everybody. I, I think it's a false expectation, and it's a little riskier than I would like to be.
When I remember having this discussion last year and thinking, oh, by this time, right now, we're gonna be done with this, everything's gonna be fine. Yet, here we are. Um, and as annoyed as I am with, with this, to, to speak frankly, um, I, I just don't know how realistic it is. And it really comes down to, to what extent are we willing to take any sort of liability? And that's, that's what we really need to consider.
Is that because of the refunds and stuff? Because in my opinion, we actually have more of an upper hand on the travel industry. So you could go to them and be like, hey, I'm willing to spend, you know, send ten people to Spain. I need a full refund policy built in. I'm sure, I mean, they're hurting right now, they're not gonna probably say no, they're gonna, I mean, so we have that upper hand, so why not utilize it? I mean, if, if that's our biggest concern.
Is this something that we could, excuse me, is this something we could talk to the attorneys about or get clarification on our, the, what our legal obligation for this would be, or if we could be held liable?
Yeah, they, I mean, when we start getting into legal and, uh, and liability, we really have to define what we think we're gonna be liable, what are we talking about, right? Um, so is it lost money that we'd be talking about when you look at that? Um, that can possibly be covered under trip insurance, and how they have all that set up, and refunds and stuff like that. I think one of the bigger things that ends up impacting us is when do trips happen? So there's a difference in kinda risk management of kids being gone, staff being gone, families being gone, when it happens during the school year, versus when it happens in the summer. Um, you know, so you take fifty kids on a trip to a foreign country, and, um, and it's during, and it's on spring break, and all of a sudden they get stuck, and now you've got kids that, they're stuck for two weeks, now they've missed two weeks of school. Um, so there's, it's not just a liability about, uh, legal stuff, or you really have to narrow down what are you, what's the risk management? And, and so those are the things that we think about. Um, the other piece of it is, I do think is an important part, is the amount of time and effort that families put into going on a trip, and then if they can't go, that, that sends shockwaves through that organization, uh, whether it's band, whether it's world language, whatever it is. They just wanna know, and, and what I, I believe we heard last time we had this discussion, is that, the groups would, even if the, if the groups were told they could only go domestic, they would at least like to know that and plan for it, rather than be told, yeah, we think you can go, and then run the possibility of it, a, a greater possibility of it not happening at all. So, the, the great discussions and questions, there, I don't, I don't know if there's a right answer. It, it's a tough one, and it'll continue to be a tough one.
Do you know if any of the music departments have something on the books that they want to get across the board as far as international travel?
Uh, no, there, I believe I have one that they're working on that's domestic, but off the top of my head, I can't remember what that is.
Yeah, I don't think they're throwing out international right now. And, and actually, honestly, for all we know, they may, this discussion we're having, they may be having within their own departments, going, yeah, we're not gonna take the chance. Who knows? I mean, and at the end of the day, it may be a moot point, because, we could open it up and they could still say. That, that, I'm sorry, I hit my buttocks, that's a good discussion point. Jessica's very good discussion point.
Yeah, I do take Bob's point to heart about, um, tra- travel during the school year. And we've had challenges with that over a year, over multiple years. So maybe even a consideration that there would not be international travel during the school year. Um, and extending us through, what does that make it, June of twenty twenty three? So that we don't have students and or staff potentially stuck outside the country, um, during the school year, and losing school time. Um, but that's, that's might be an appealing compromise, that's appealing to me.
Interesting compromise.
Um, one question that I had as a follow-up would be that if we were concerned that, say, that they were stranded for two weeks, they've done remote learning for how long, and that was acceptable for six months or whatever, so, um, if they had to do it for two weeks stuck in Spain, I'm not sure they're gonna complain too much.
Yeah, except some staff will be with them. And we're not structured for, like hybrid and remote learning right now. Kids, if they're not in the building, they're on Schoology, um, doing their own independent study and are picking up materials from the building. So it's not, it's not like the virtual learning that we had that year, we were out of the building.
But, you're gonna learn best in that environment, so if I'm trying to learn Spanish, I'm gonna probably learn it best in Spain.
You, that may be true, you're gonna be challenged to get your industrial tech work done correctly, but yes, your Spanish might be stronger.
I'm sorry. I think this, it shuts itself off. It's shutting itself off. Um, I think it's really good conversation, and, I think we'll, we'll look at doing something, to Lisa's point, we'll do something, um, with our general session this, this month, and, and get that done. Uh, one way or another, for sure.
Good discussion.
With nothing else, I'm gonna move to the listening session rotations. Which are on the school board calendar, which are set up on board book. So, listening sessions. So prior to the general sessions, we take turns, usually a couple of us at a time, um, ahead of the, the general meeting. Um, just, you know, allowing the public to come talk to us about anything they might wanna talk to us about. Um, and we take turns doing that. So we'll, um, need to set up a rotation for all of us, in terms of the dates that we have, or we have to come a little bit early. Um, usually it's, you know, unless, unless there's a reason where you're planning on being at that general meeting for some reason, just taking turns and it really, um, probably isn't too, um, too intrusive. Um, so, if it's okay, we'll just, I mean, we can just set up some general rotations, or random rotations, or random pairings, or however you like to do it, I'm okay with.
I would just like to make one, I, I have one accommodation that I'd like to try to make if I could, if at all possible. My husband works twenty-four hour shifts. And it's a weird schedule, so, if possible.
No, that's a, that's a great thing to bring up, Carrie, too, because I think it was, maybe October, I was supposed to be at the listening session, but I was at a conference and I had a conflict, and Becky ended up switching with me. So that's, that's easy to fix, and we'll just work together as a team to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
I personally would rather go back to the full public input, where they were able to speak to us directly instead of. So that's, uh, likely, I'm guessing, another, uh, discussion for that.
Yeah, and I can, I can appreciate that. I mean, they, they both have their benefits and their dawnfalls, um, with, with the listening sh- session, it's just two board members, so you can actually have some dialogue, whereas like if it's, I'd, I'd rather not be spoken at, but I can also see the benefit of talking to all of us, because then we're all on the same page too, so. Um, no, I, I can appreciate that comment.
And to your point, Mike, maybe it's some form of, you know, for lack of a better word, I hate using the word hybrid, because it reminds me of school and all that, but, um, but the idea of maybe, you know, having those one-on-ones, and then maybe, you know, allowing for a certain amount of time for the input as well. You know, it might leave us here a little bit longer each time, but I'm open to it for sure.
Yeah, like a, a monthly thing.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, so our current policy is the listening session, and I think that's how we would structure the year to get started, and we'll get a schedule on that. And then, I mean, I think we can go back into policy and discuss how we ended up at the place we did, and why, and see if, if those are still the same, but, um, right now, we'd have to comply with our policy, which does not have a, a spot for public involvement. Again, I just wanna reiterate, and this took me about, three and a half years to get really, like, fully integrated into my brain. This is not a public meeting, right? This is work we're doing right now, in a, in a work, in a work session or in a regular meeting. This is not a public meeting. This is us doing our work in the public. And that, that's just, took me a long time to really integrate into my head, and people can call us. I suspect right now, your, cell phones, my cellphone is on the, the district webpage. You will hear from the public. That, that's, hearing from the public is not, um, difficult.
I was one of those public, so I definitely.
Yeah, we're not hard to get a hold of. You are not hard to get a hold of.
No, but I mean, I, I just think that there's some times that they just have that part where, I mean, and Stephanie's point, I don't, I would rather have that conversation piece, you know, on, on like where they come up, we, we can't really debate, but, or we can't debate, rather, um, but it would be nice to, whether it's a, a monthly thi- at least a monthly thing, I, um, or some, some kind of instance that gives them that opportunity, and maybe nobody shows up for it, and hey, that's, that's fine too, but.
Yeah, and the co- the other thing that we've had happen, we didn't have it happen this year, but, um, a couple examples. So we've done budget cuts some years, where we've used, rather than, uh, like a survey and an engagement that way, we've had public meetings. We had a public meeting about boundary realignments. We had a public meeting about, uh, I can't think of a third topic right off the top of my head. Um, and those, those had public, presentation as a component. And so if you wanna come speak to us, um, and we're gonna be available at multiple locations. Like we did it, you know, in the, in the Pinecrest Gym, we did it in the Kennedy Gym, we've done it, in the middle school auditorium, in middle school lunchroom, and, and a lot of, both as a listening, like a, like a hearing, where people can speak to the whole group, or where they can just be in the room and talking to board members or administrators. So, when we get to a, a specific topic, there's certainly that potential to have a public meeting, where you do public engagement.
And.
I think I also would caution during the listening session, that is a listening session, and you gotta be a little bit careful, to, to all the board members, myself included, that that's not a dialogue time necessarily. It's, you can quest, ask questions to, to listen deeply and empathetically, and, and, listen to understand, but it's not a time to give feedback, because when you're not in session, and when you're not a, at the board table, you, you don't have the ability to speak on behalf of the district. Uh, it's, it's an odd situation, but, you're only, you only have the power of the board when you're at the board table.
So this is something that could go to policy and be adjusted or adapted accordingly, and then brought back and get that done. Um, again, good discussion, this is gonna be great. Um, okay, so, we move on to items for individual action. These are actions that we actually vote on. Um, either I, A or N A, or some candidates abstain if they like. Um, so, the first thing on here is our regular board meeting dates. And if you look in board book, the calendar's laid out, for when the regular board meetings are, and the work sessions, as the calendar's currently laid out right now. Um, this does require us to vote on it and see if we're okay with it. I'm Lisa.
No, I, that's my frustration, I keep opening the same link. That's, that's my frustration, Andrew.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was you raising your hand frustration, okay. Got it, okay. So, so we've got the dates laid out there, you guys can all see them. Um, this just requires a simple vote, um, determining on the dates. If there's dates you see that are conflict, we try to avoid anything that is national observance of any sort. Um, best we can. Sometimes we discover later that we hit one and didn't realize it, and then have to, um, vote to change it. But as I'm looking through here, I'm kinda scanning very quickly. Is May twenty fifth? No, it's not, okay. I was worrying about Memorial Day, but it's not. Twenty fifth, it's not Memorial Day, this year twenty seventh is, so.
You don't run into too many holidays, federal holidays on a Wednesday.
On a Wednesday, no, you don't. Um, so that's, that's good. Um, so, um, having, first of all, is there any discussion on the calendar before we vote on it?
The only one that we might need to be aware of is a newer federal holiday, so on June twentieth is the observation for Juneteenth. So that is technically a federal holiday. It is not a restricted day, but just so everybody's aware, that may be one.
It's not this year, though.
Well.
I mean, my point is, our meeting is.
This year, correct, but just so people are aware that it, we may see that in subsequent years, yep.
Absolutely fair, absolutely fair. That's a new national observance, so we'll have to be aware of that in subsequent years. This year, it's not, um, an issue.
I move to adopt the, uh, board meeting date calendar as represented in the agenda.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the twenty twenty two board calendar, say aye.
Aye.
I swear it's shredding itself off. I swear it is. Um,
Folter guys.
Um, okay, so the next thing on here is, it's a pretty academic function. It's an authorization for the superintendent to perform routine functions and responsibilities of the clerk and the treasurer in their absence. Um, and again, I will ask for any discussion on this prior to the vote.
Some of.
Second.
I'm sorry. Now we're up to discussion, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what some of those, um, things might be. Is it only when, when they're out, uh, kinda thing, like the vice chair takes on the chair responsibility? Or what, what are the law involved in that?
It's, this is specific to the clerk and the treasurer. It basically means that the clerk doesn't have to write the minutes, during the meeting, that they can administer that to a, to the superintendent, who can in turn administer that to Becky. Garcia, so it's the, the daily operational work of the treasury and the clerk, um, the, the.
Of the school board.
Of the school board, that, that component of the school board. It doesn't speak to the chair or the vice chair position. It's specific to the work, the board's work of the clerk and the treasurer.
And so on the tre- so on the clerk side, it seems like it's more the meeting minutes and stuff, um, but, so on the, uh, treasurer side, is that just signing checks or bal- balancing?
It could be, but what ends up happening is there's another delegation that goes to the finance department. So the, if you think about it in terms of the school board, the school board approves the release of dollars to whom at what cost. The operations of that ends up being through the superintendent, through our administrative team. So, by function, um, you know, they, if, when we were in the days of, of, uh, written checks, you would see the signatures of different people on those checks, and we don't have that, but that's kind of how I, how I visualize it.
Every now and then you'll still see it, every now and then you'll see a check come out from the school district, it's rare. And there'll be, uh, the treasurer's signature on there, but all that administrative stuff is done by the finance department. We release the funds, and subsequently, they do the work. Is that what she thinks is going on? Did, you did not tell me. You might have voted, okay.
Are you left-handed?
Am I left-handed?
Yeah.
No, but I read it, it's.
Put you right across your body.
It's a long story, I read across my body, it's more comfortable, it's a whole nother thing. Okay, um, so, I need a motion to authorize superintendent, to perform routine functions responsibly to the clerk and the treasurer. I got the motion in a second, I'm sorry. Is there any more discussion? I'll get used to this.
It's just a rhythm thing.
I know. All in favor, oh, sorry, Jessica, I'm sorry.
So who's responsible for publishing the minutes then? Is that, then administrative? Okay, okay, that's all right.
The other Becky. The other Becky.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Here is a fun one. Okay, so now we're talking about this uh the two thousand twenty two board member compensation and benefit participation. So according to statute, we can, first of all, um, pay ourselves a certain amount. Um, you're also, there's also some things we'll talk about here in terms of benefit participation that Superintendent McDowell go more into. But we um just had to make some determinations based up on that and vote tonight. Um, the last, is it the last two years we haven't been paid? Just last year, the last year, we determined based on all things we're going on with budget and such, not to take any compensation for our positions. Um, so that's currently where we were in two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty. Um, you can see the compensation there and what we took. Um, Superintendent McDowell, can you ref- reference the benefit participation, please, for me, please?
Yep, you'll notice that in this, what we've laid out here is what under under the statute, you see statute one twenty three thirty three. Um, talks about what you're you can um have. The only thing you'll see underneath the, it's the bigger paragraph that speaks to it's permissible for board members to participate in uh fringe benefits such as insurance, medical hospital. Our uh current provider does not allow for school board members to have this insurance. Um, so that would be the only thing that uh wouldn't be something, which is why you don't see an option for to take or not to take with that one. But everything else on there is, as you shared, um, it denotes that what the twenty one uh the twenty 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 and then the twenty twenty one pay or compensation packages were for the board. So that would really be the thing on this action item that you would be voting on is uh to what degree, if any, that the board wants to uh be compensated.
So the first thing we will do is I'm getting this flow here, is take a motion um to vote. What are we voting for, though, because we haven't talked about it?
You need to take a motion.
We still need to take a motion. Okay.
Yeah, somebody puts a motion on the table.
So I just need a motion to to review this um this action item.
Yeah, you need a motion with some level of compensation in it for both a board member and a chair. That's the motion you need, so you.
Okay, so based on twenty twenty one, then, what I'm looking for is a motion to keep the um compensation for the board um directors at zero for this year. Do I have a motion for that?
Okay, so that's you directing a specific motion, like with a specific number? And I and I think what we're asking, can the the chair can make a motion. So you could make a mo- you could make the motion for zero, okay, is that what you meant to do?
I did, didn't I say I moved? I thought I did, if I didn't, I meant to.
I thought you said something like I'm seeking a motion.
No, I meant to say I I moved that to twenty twenty one um compensation for the board director stay at zero.
Okay, got it, and now I understand what you're doing.
So we need a second.
Second.
Now we move on to is there any discussion?
Got it.
Yes, Mike.
Um. I think that there's other areas that could be cut instead. Um, as an example, maybe like I seen that we'd spent a lot of money on like surveys or um kind of companies. So I think trying to save money here, you're just delaying the inevitable. So I would more want those amounts that are listed. And if we continue to find ourselves in budget trouble, which we very well will, but utilize um looking at other other aspects of it um that for the funds.
Okay, um, so then the question would be, what would you propose?
No, so we're discussing the motion on the table.
Yep.
And we've heard Mike's feedback on that, so you could either, I suppose, amend it, amend the motion, or it's just part of the discussion, and then we have to act on the motion on the table.
Yep.
And then maybe take another motion if need be.
Okay.
And I would, to speak to Mike's point or to speak to this point, um. I think it's represent the the taking no compensation for this position is not is s- somewhat about saving money, there's some nominal amount of money saved. But I think it's more about representing our individual commitment of service. And so I I would support the motion as it stands.
So follow up then would be is out of the past fifty years, how many years have not been compensated? And my guess would be probably just that one, I don't I don't know, but so.
In the ten years that I've been on the board, and I can't speak to fifty years, even though I'm that old, um. There was one year with no compensation, correct.
So then historically, that point you'd made just referencing the commitment for the other nine out of the ten years, it wasn't about the commitment then, or it is now, I guess is.
No, I think from my personal perspective, since I'm was the one that has done that, um. Honestly, I never stopped to think super hard about it, it was it was a continuation of past practice. And then when it when it was raised during our organizational meeting last year, and I think Scott Gergen made the the um motion. I was surprised because honestly, I was just in a in a habit. And I feel like like stopping to think about it and thinking about it in a new way um caused me to think about it in a new way and to stop and think about our um comp- our piece of that and what it represents. So I I just uh learned something new, I guess.
But we get comp, but you would get compensated if you attended the nine seventeen, right? M- district.
That's a different budget.
I mean, I I do get that, but I just wanted to point that out, that other areas are still contributing, okay.
Yep, every board makes their own decision about compensation, yep.
On this one, this one impacts, obviously, everything impacts all of us, but this one in particular is very individualized, so I want to make sure that I hear from everyone. So I'm gonna move to Director Tate and ask your take, please.
Um, I honestly didn't know that there was compensation for this.
I didn't either, I didn't either.
Until I had a conversation with Lisa. Um, I I I'm not doing it for the money, um, so I I am I'm fine either way. Um, so I I don't, I'd like to hear other conversation.
There. Director Russell?
I agree, I didn't know there was board compensation until, but I would like I would like to hear both sides of it, because I know that other boards do get paid. And since last year was the only year this board didn't receive compensation, I'd like to hear from other board members that have gotten both sides of it.
Sure. Director Beisel?
I've received compensation, which I the first year I didn't know either, and last year I did not, I didn't feel a difference. But last year, I really felt that I was unified with our staff and our commitment to the student staff. Um, we're cutting an F T E, we're cutting all these programs. I felt that I really truly stood behind all that with me not s- s- coming home with forty two hundred dollars a year. I it's not a lot, but it adds up. So I truly felt a big difference last year, I felt like I was more committed to my duties here, um, stand by my voting, knowing that I was not getting compensation, but and I was cutting an F T E somewhere or cutting a program. I just really felt more unified with my decision that way.
Director Ma.
So for this one, I kind of go back and forth a little bit, um echoing Becky's sentiment there is that, you know, it we are at a time where I'm going to take this off because it's so um muddled.
Yep.
Uh, I don't know, I can't even hear myself. Um, so when when we decided last year that we were going to cut our compensation, um, to me, it made financial sense. It was a dedication to the organization, to the district, to the community. Um, yes, it's pennies in this sixty million dollar pot, um, but to me, it wasn't about the compensation. Uh, it was about I I'm doing this for the community, I'm doing this for the organization, the districts, the students. Um, however, I will say that it would be nice to be compensated for at least the printer ink. Uh, and maybe a little bit of the wifi bill, because I'm on this at least ten hours a week doing board work. Uh, but that's just me speaking selfishly. Uh, but there is a little piece of that too, and and I think there's something to be said too, that like, you know, if you're not compensated, how often are and hopefully, nobody goes here, but it's like, well, I'm not being paid to do this, I don't have to deal. Well, no, you did sign up for this, you made a commitment, is it really about the money, but it's an easy scapegoat too. Uh, so I go back and forth a lot, I'd say for this year, I would be comfortable um at zero and at the most at maybe like a grand, um, maybe fifteen hundred for the chair, because the chair does put in a lot more hours than than we do as uh regular directors. Um, but yeah, so that's that's my two cents.
Go ahead, Mike.
Um, you do always have the option to donate your money. So if you felt that obligation, you know, you you could donate it to the school, and it'd be a tax write-off for you, so that would be nice. Um, have the admin or any high paying officials or teachers taken pay cuts? Because I know that during this pandemic, um, in the beginning, my entire company uh took a a ten percent if you were under a certain amount, and if you were an executive, they took a twenty five percent pay cut. And that was just across the board, so um I would think that if we're more expected to be more about the community and stuff, that wouldn't we expect the district, uh um the teachers, staff and everybody to want to then voluntarily give away some of their money to hire or keep other things? And my guess is no, that they don't want to. So in here, um, you could pay the the board, our us board members that amount. And if you don't feel that you need that full amount, again, donate it, donate it to a nonprofit, back to the school, to the library, whatever your heart desires.
What we can do at this point is we can vote, and if we vote no, then we can revisit, and then we'll make a motion for whatever that dollar amount would be, since that motion would have failed, correct?
So we're voting on the no doll, okay, just wanted to.
Correct, am I correct in that?
Bob made the point that somebody could make a friendly amendment with a with a different dollar value.
It's true.
But I I think sort of either either way works, because we don't know the answer to this first question.
You still have to vote for the amendment, though.
Yep, you have to vote for the amendment, the other thing.
You have to accept the amendment, and then you have to vote for this. You could do it either either way, there's probably two votes in there.
Um, I'm wondering, I mean, without us all divulging our personal financial situations, is there an option for us individually to choose whether or not to be compensated? Could we set it up that way or not?
I I feel like you'd have to embed it in the motion by name, which feels a little. I I would not support.
I would say you're treading on some weird ground.
Yeah.
Is about the best way I can say it, because by doing it that way, you're essentially establishing different levels inside of a otherwise horizontal organization. So a director is getting paid more because they choose to get, uh, that would get weird. Um, the only other thing I will say is just remember, you have to take two votes here, one is for the director pay, and one in the second vote is going to be for the board chair, so there's there's two specific things.
And I also don't know that even if we try to do that, that it couldn't, wouldn't have to be disclosed, who is who. So I think that would be public knowledge anyway. So, yeah, so.
I would recommend.
It'd be the purpose, I think.
You keep like positions like positions.
So we can do this a couple of different ways. My my preference is that we we vote on this zero. If it votes down, and then we can put a proposal on the table for what it should be, and you're right, there's two votes there. So that being said, based on the current, the current um compensation of zero, which is um already been proposed and seconded, I need to know how many would vote yes.
Sorry?
You have to actually vote, you can't you you can't do a straw poll, you you call the motion, okay. It sounded like it was almost a straw poll.
Just those in favor.
Yeah, so so those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right on the fence there. Um, those opposed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, so you got that down? Okay, so the motion passes for three.
So now.
I'll make a motion that the board chair's compensation for twenty twenty two be zero.
Second. Any discussion?
I might still stick with those numbers.
Fair enough. So all in favor of the motion, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Same, same. Okay, let's move to participation in the district's term life insurance program. Superintendent McDowell, can you speak to this?
Yep, so the life insurance program is something that uh the board has the ability uh to participate in. The district pays the premium for a fifty thousand dollar uh term life. So the board just needs to approve as the motion describes there.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm sure that costs the district money, so wouldn't we then want to just scrap all benefits whatsoever? And then also, if we're looking at taking that away, is looking at other people reducing their pays as well?
Do we have to accept the term life insurance, like as an individual board member, if you if it's offered, is that how that works?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to Jen on that one.
Jen, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and you probably don't know this, but do you know the the cost to the district for it?
It's gotta be for each person, yeah. Any more discussion on the participant district's term life insurance program? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's defeated six one.
That's cool.
Moving to official direct depositories.
District. And before you do that, Chair, can I just make a, can I just clarify the next set of, I don't know, ten, twelve things that are on there? Um, so as we move, as the board moves into the next segment of this, where you, and I've had a couple of conversations with individual board members about this. Um, so you're gonna see um the uh participate or um district depositories, fund transfers, all that stuff. These are things that happen at every organizational meeting, typically a school board, if they're going to make a change to these in the upcoming year, this will be something that's a discussion in the year preceding, so that we could have anything done and ready to go, so that we don't have any gaps in um any one of those services. Um, so that's to say that boards do make changes, typically what happens if we were going to make a change, and the newspaper is a great uh example of this one I've shared with people. Um, that's been a conversation that's been on the board's radar for the last year and a half, and we've just been waiting. And so that one will be a change tonight, so typically, any of the other ones, um, and I know the question came up about this being uh the these next things being on a consent agenda, they absolutely can be on a consent agenda, um, or they can be on a an individual action basis either, but just give some background and context for the the next set of selections.
So for next year's organizational meeting, would we have discussions about any changes being made, just like October, September, like is there a standard for when that has to be done?
Yeah, there really, there really, it would just be when someone, let's say, um, one or two board members say, you know what, we'd have we ever looked into doing X? And then that would be something that the board would have to say at a discussion, yeah, we'd really like to look into this more. Can depending upon what the topic is, then Jen or Kathy or myself would dig into it, come back to the board and say, here's what we think the options are. And the board would then say, okay, we don't want to do that, or. And the board would then say, okay, we don't wanna do that, or yeah, dig into that one, we wanna come back with more information. And then we'd take the, take the time to look into it um and bring it back so that by the time we got to the organizational meeting, you're basically officially doing it and we're ready to go tomorrow with it. Cause you've already kinda decided as a board that you you know you wanna move in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
And I think also sometimes we might hear from a a staff person, cause if I remember correctly, um, Jen, a few years ago, the the finance office brought forward a change from one bank to a local bank and we were able to get a different level of service and and that too came like midsummer and it just said, okay, we're gonna get ready so that we're in a position to to take advantage of this and that, so it could come from a board member, it could come from somebody that's working on a daily basis in that area saying, oh, I've we're discovering that there's maybe a better fit for us, let's get ready.
And that typically is, that's been my experience with it is it'll, a lot of these are the day-to-day things that we work with at the district office, and so if we start seeing that, I don't think this is not good for the district or it's going in a different direction, or the people we've been working with that we like so much are retiring. We're gonna probably, we'll probably beat you to the punch on that and say, we we want some direction in searching this out because we we're kinda forecasting that this this needs to happen, but it can happen either way.
Um, is there any, I I mean, I just wanna clarify, I'm not hearing it, is there any kind of a review? Um, I'm I'm looking mostly at like legal counsel um regarding like their billing rates versus perhaps other options or anything like that, or is that that would only be done if we requested it?
We could go through the process of uh of doing that, I think when you look at auditing and legal those are, those are two of our most significant relationships that we have with people and they know our district, they know the context of our district, and so while we want to get we always wanna have the most value for the lowest price, right? And so that's really what the question becomes is, is are we getting charged exorbitant fees and not getting the level of service that we need? Because those are the two areas that really keep not only the district, but the board's risk management at the lowest level possible. So that's what we're paying for. It it's always something to look at, my experience has been that the the law firms that do school law with the legal, they're fairly close to one another, there's a going rate for what school law, special ed law, all um finance law do, um, and the uh the fact that, for example, the the legal council that we have is legal council that um, the majority of the districts that we compare ourselves to are in, we're we're in pretty good hands. Uh, we had gained benefits from tho- those types of things as well because they're they're, those districts deal with some of the thing, same things we deal with and so they're also on the same, while they know our district's context, they're also dealing with the same things and so we benefit from them dealing with other districts on the similar topics.
Thank you.
So the one, so the one piece that, I mean, we could turn this into a consent agenda and vote all of it at once, right? Maybe pulling out the newspaper? Or do you wanna do it item to item?
They're listed as individual action items, I don't know, you'd have to take a motion for each one of them to put them into a consent, I believe, and then I would just leave them as action because that's the way they were written.
I'll leave them alone then, then we will, then we'll start from the beginning or start from the top and we'll start with the um official district depositories. Which are again available on board book for where we work with, I just need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mike, you're thinking.
I am, I just, I don't, I didn't know anything like Jessica had mentioned about the um done in October, so I didn't review any of that, so I I have no opinion really on on those.
That's fair.
I feel like next organizational meeting will be a little bit better to to speak to this, but being a new board member, we we didn't really have much interaction with any of this, so we didn't.
It's fair. Seeing no further discussion, um, all those who are in favor, um, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say aye please. Motion passes. Electronic funds transfer.
So moved, recommended motion.
Second.
Discussion. These things are pretty basic, um, all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Authority signing contracts and entering agreements, this again pretty standard, um, with superintendent director of business signing contracts and entering agreements on the board on behalf of the school district. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Seconded.
Yes.
I just have a.
Welcome to the party, welcome to the party.
I just have a question, do we have a director of business or is it now HR or is that title still around?
That's Jen.
Director of business, oh, I have finance, so it's the same thing.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I guess just what kind of contracts, how long they are for and stuff, but I think it boils down to the same scenario of not not knowing, not having, you know, that information, so I don't really have an opinion.
Over the course of the year, it'll start to come clear really fast.
The motion does include a designation that that's as provided by board action, so the board might say, you know, we're gonna enter into a contract for this construction item or these purchase agreements or these billing, it's, so it's
We approve.
Per board action and it, so it'll come up each month.
So the signing office by the by a direction.
But it means that that they're the signatories to the contract, they go but to the meeting and sign on our behalf.
Okay, is, so I just have a follow-up question, is is there any threshold that says that, you know, that can be acted on that can be acted on without board approval? And if so, what, anybody know what that is?
So you're talking for financial?
Correct, like can you, can you enter into a contract for fifty thousand dollars without board approval or is every contract that we enter into, would that be?
No, uh, the the threshold is under statute, so it would be uh following statute, I think statute lim is one seventy-five. Uh, but then Jen has to can you clarify the, you know the verbiage on it better than I do with contracts?
And is that one seventy-five, uh, like a hundred or like in a hundred and seventy-five thousand?
So hundred and seventy-five thousand, right, but
Thank you.
Thank you, that clarifies it, cause there's a statutory, whatever it is, but the the long and short of it is, there isn't much that doesn't come to the board anyway because it doesn't make sense for us to be entering into large contracts without you knowing about it, because at some point it's gonna be known what it is and you're gonna be going, what's going on, so um yeah, when the first bill shows up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, I've got first and a second, any other discussion, it's not resting on it. Okay, based on that and no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, say aye. Motion passes. Let's move the joint powers. Basically same thing. Contracts, um, and entering agreements, the joint powers has to do with how we interact with the city.
I think this is, is this purchasing agreements or joint powers agreements with the city?
No, this is joint powers agreements with purchasing, so that what ends up happening is the joint powers, we're not gonna, we're not gonna necessarily do things in the same, it'll be in the same manner as what I just talked about. It's gonna be something, a joint powers agreement is gonna come to the board, we're gonna talk about it, do you wanna do it? And then what ends up happening is it allows Jen and I to sign those documents when they come in. And then Jen's gonna clarify that statement even farther.
Yes.
So moved.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Designation of identified officials with authority, Iowa. I don't know, I think it's funny, it says Iowa, um. So Bob, any background on this, do you wanna um share for the new members?
So you can see it's in the description up there, uh, essentially through the department of ed, every district has to have an Iowa, which has to be the superintendent. Um, and then there's a designee, we uh we run myself and then uh, Ms. Williams is the designee for the Iowa, essentially it's all the secure data behind the scenes that allows uh different directors and or other administrators to get into the secure side of the department of education, so when we upload um all of our uh uh finance stuff, when we upload all of our uh discipline reports, when we, all the reports that are secure reports, they can only be done by people who we've given authority to do them, and so in order to do that, the department of ed requires every school board in their organizational meeting to designate with that exact verbiage. Uh, because what'll happen after this is that exact verbiage on this date will get sent by Becky to the department of ed and then they will keep me as the Iowa so that we can continue to have those people authorized. It's a lot for a single vote.
It's a lot.
So moved.
Looking for a second.
I second.
There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Designation of the official publication, now the official publication, the motion is specific. Um, but the recommended motion, I should say, is to designate the Hastings Journal, which was the official district publication for this past year as the publication for this year. That's not what it says. Oh, that's what.
Because now they've been in play long enough and they have enough. Subscribers, thank you, I wanted to say enrollments and I knew that was the wrong number.
You had to have over four hundred subscribers in order to be eligible to be designated and they weren't there last year and now they are. And they've been around longer now.
So will all official school district? Will like our board meeting stuff be in there or will all district stuff be in the journal?
You're voting for the official newspaper of the school district to be the Hastings Journal, so at a minimum, the stuff that we have to put out in to a newspaper as required will go to the Hastings Journal.
So public notices.
Yep.
Yep. And that's where.
And minutes, I think, it printed.
And minutes, yeah.
Yeah, board minutes and and public notices would go out in the journal.
Do we have a motion yet? Do we have a motion?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay, with a motion a second, now we can open for discussion, Mike.
I'm not a fan of them, just based on historical information that I've read with them, so I just wanna put that out there that I'm not a fan of the Hastings Journal, so I would um prefer the Pioneer Press is what you had used before, um, that's just my thought uh on that.
Fair enough, thank you for that input, fair enough.
I know there's um some community conversations about the quality of journalism that's represented in the journal and and, you know, typos and life, which sort of reflects my life, but um I will say that public notices and minutes are, they're submitted by us and they're accurately represented, but I I hear what you're saying about that, Mike. That being said, I would, I still feel that supporting a a local uh paper that's trying to do this work is valuable.
Do we know what the numbers are for the subscriptions for the?
Currently?
Yeah.
I don't know if we have the exact number.
Over a thousand.
Over a thousand, okay. Um, over a thousand.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, let's put to a vote and see where we end up, um, so all in favor of the motion of utilizing Hastings Journal's official district population, please identify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say aye please. Aye. Five two. Motion passes, we're moving to legal counsel now. These are the current law firms we work with. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Same as the other one, just got nothing, so, yep.
Fair enough, fair enough. Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. District auditors. Man, it's a tough job, um, any emotion please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Veximally signatures. This is basically the idea that if you're, have to sign something, that you don't have to sign something essentially. Um, because actually, for example, the treasure signature is on every single check, I think I already identified that, so that would be a lot of signing for any one person to do. So this is a lot, allows for them to use a veximally. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes. Future meetings. So, in your board book, there is a list of when the meetings are currently planned for the two thousand twenty-two year, these are for the um looks like the work sessions um up through May, um, also in terms of the community engagement committee. Meetings are are um reflected on there. Our long-range planning meetings, our governance meetings, um, are all listed on there. I feel there's a few things missing though.
And once we get the committees established and determine what, yeah, this list will be a lot longer to um, a point of clarification on here with the community engagement committee. Um, we, we were kind of bouncing all over the place because the district office was under construction, so that is set. Um, we, we meet the last Tuesday of every month, uh, by we, I mean, the committee. Um, from six to seven and that will be in the district office conference room.
And has been indicated and was indicated before, once the other ones are, have a chance to set their meeting dates and things like that, it'll be on there. The reason community engagement is on there is because again, it involves so many people in the community, that just has to be set out and very static. So that everybody knows when it is because, believe me, it's literally everybody, um, whether it be Rotary or whatever, anybody that's active in the community is part of that group, it's kinda fun. So that's that, uh, does have to be voted on, so I need a motion? Oh, it's just information, oh, we're out of voting mode. Very good.
I do have a question about the the committees, um, because there are so few, um, will we have any committees? Um, w- will we have any committees with a quorum? Because I'm just thinking about planning calendar, okay. You can't have a quorum.
You can't have a quorum in the committee because then it violates open meeting law.
You, you won't have a quorum, not, that's because of open meeting law, cause that's already, they'll be posted and they're open, but because you're not gonna take a voting action, you would take a recommendation from the committee to the board for action. So they would not be quorum sized.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, the the committees are there to, I mean, that's where all of the work is gonna be done. And then at the board meetings, we solidify everything. So you know, in past meetings, you've seen the, the updates or the summaries from the committees. So the, the committee comes to the board and says, okay, this is what we did in the last month. These are our recommendations for whatever motions are, are on the list on our agenda for, for the meeting.
Yeah, and it also can happen that, and I know not everybody can make it to every work session, but sometimes something will come out of a committee with a, with a few alternatives and then be worked on as a larger board at the work session and then get to there. So so even if you're not sitting in the committee room where you'll get in on that discussion level prior to the decision level on the biggest stuff. Cause that, it can happen over months.
And believe me, you know, regardless of which committee you sit on, you'd be amazed how many things go back and forth. A number of times you discover there's so much, there's so much being done there. You just discover that because it's going back and forth and coming in and out of those committees. So.
Is there a certain number of committees that each board member has to be on?
No, we try, try to make sure that, you know, it's all spread out and everybody's not glommed into one and that kinda thing, but no. So, that being said, we have moved to adjournment. I need a motion to adjourn however.
So moved.
All is in favor, say aye. All opposed, say aye. We are adjourned to seven fifty-three PM. Welcome, all of you.
Spin around and stay for the work session.
Yes, we can. I should take a break. What time do you wanna be, do you wanna s- what's that?
Yeah.
Yeah, our work session.
Yeah, we're gonna spin our chairs around and come to back to the work session.